We open the. We open the public meeting.
A motion to open.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
I.
All right.
Scott, no homies?
Scott?
Yes, Bill.
I feel that being both on the planning board and the appeals board also. It could be a conflict for me to be here for both hearings, so I'm gonna recluse myself from this hearing. Uh, I'm not getting anything.
Mallory, you just broke up.
I think what she's gonna tell you, Bill, is that she did hear from the ethics committee that they thought it was okay for you to be in the meeting.
Yep.
Okay, as long as, as long as it's not a, a conflict, I didn't want to cause something here.
No, I spoke with attorney Mike McDonald this afternoon, Bill, who said that as long as there's no financial interest in either of the projects, you're okay to speak because you're speaking with the best interests of the town on both boards.
Okay.
Mallory?
Yes.
Yeah, I need to, oh, you don't, we don't have Chris yet?
No, ma'am.
Okay, when he comes in, let me know.
Okay.
Tell, tell the board if we have three members of our planning board meeting attending your meeting, which is what I think will be the case. I have to call. He's there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I also need to call a meeting of the planning board to order because we do have a quorum, which is Phil Holman, myself, Alice Livedall, and Christopher Monroe. Uh, who all wanted to come.
Alice Holman's. I'll make the motion to open the meeting.
Okay, Chris, I'll second that. I guess I can do that. All in favor? Livedall, I.
I.
I'm in, sorry.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I just have to read the virtual meeting statement, and then the floor is all yours, Scott. So the virtual meeting statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, orders to adjournings are in progress at the open meeting lodge, general lodge, chapter 30A, subsection 18. The governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This, the meeting of the Hubbardson Board of Appeals will be conducted to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, general guidelines for remote participation on members of the public and our parties with a right and our requirement to attend can be found at www.hubbardson.us. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite less efforts, we will post on the town's website.
Hold on.
Audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mallory. We're reopening the meeting, so we, at the last zoning board meeting, we asked Bowie and Wesley to come back with some additional information. Hey. Do you have the, the next? Parts of that information, Bowie?
All right, so that was the, for the perk test. So, the perk test that we had done for the septic system, I, I actually, I'm trying to look through my emails from the engineer right now. I'm sorry, it's been kind of a crazy week, but it was, it was done. It was done in the front of the property, and I believe the, the zoning board member who asked was wondering about like the rear. If this was done in the rear of the property where we were proposing to build some bigger stuff. And, um, it's not, uh, let me see, I'm. A whole bunch of engineer, uh, emails from the engineer, and I'm sorry, I've been dealing with the special permit stuff as well for the, for the site right now, so it's. Give me one second. There we go. Let's see here. Okay, what, besides the perk test, what was it, what were the other things? Wesley has something, oh, the, the parking, the, the, um, the green parking solution. Was one thing that people wanted a little more, a little more information on, like, could it be plowed or just a little more background on it? So, I think he could probably speak to that. I think people were.
Happy to, I'm happy to speak to that. So I hear from Bowie that, that there was some concern about the winter. Performance of the point of, of this sort of parking system. So, I, we, we, we suggested it because we are always eager to have more permeability in the parking areas because, you know, obviously, if more water can be, can infiltrate, we think it's a better situation. So, essentially, what we would do is pave asphalt tracks that hold, you know, about three foot, you know, it's essentially a nine-foot unit, so it's a three-foot track, a three-foot gap, and a three-foot track, and then that repeats. So. So, about a third of the parking area is permeable. And what we would do is leave it lower than, you know, that, so the pavement would hover above the grade, and that permeable area would be. You know, some kind of vegetated lawn, but it would be on a sandy loam or a, a material that would infiltrate the water. So, over time, it's possible that it would build up, but generally, if it were plowed, the plows would skim across the paved areas and not even touch the ground of this, of this permeable area. So that's the intent of the design, and that's how the design would work. If there's concern about it, we're happy to. Default back to a more normal type of pavement situation, but we thought it would be, you know, not only beautiful to see a third of the parking lot green. But it would also be ecologically. More sound and more interesting. So that's one issue, and then the other issue was to explore angle parking. And, you know, that was quite simple. If we take the same, we have a 60-foot unit. Which, you know, which i- is about 18, um, we didn't quite render it this way on the plan, but it's generally 18 feet per car bay. A 24-foot aisle and another 18-foot car bay, which equals 60. If you do a 60-degree angle parking, which is a more modest than the 45, and I think probably a better, you, you shave off about five feet from the total. 60-foot dimension. So, the concern there was the offset from the road, so in its current situation, and I'm happy to share the screen, or if, 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 but I'll just explain it, and then we can look at it in more detail.
Wesley, I'll make you a co-panelist, so you can do that.
Okay, would you like me to shave? Okay, I'm happy to, because I'm looking at it right now.
It's all yours.
All right, let me get this set up here. Share screen. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Okay, good, so if you, if you, I'll try to zoom into this particular area. So if you look at this area, you know, this dimension. From here to here. Is 60 feet. And we, we rendered it as 20, 20, 20, but it's 18, it can be 18, 24, 18. And you'll see these brown lines that I have sketched in there. That's the dimension of a, of a 45, sorry, 60-degree angle parking. And you'll see down here, if you look at this, this is, it was 28 feet, point, 28.39 feet approximately from this corner to the edge of the road, and it increases about five feet. To about 33 and, and change, so that's, that's what the angle parking buys you. We had, you know, we had designed this as one way, that was another question that, that. Came up, but it, you know, and the angle parking would make it necessary for it to be one way all the time. But. That, you know, and, and that works perfectly well, you know, all the traffic would come in here, either park here, back out, come and go out. This is wide enough that you could go out there too, or everybody would park in here, come in, go out, or pull through here, park here, back up, and go out. So, so, you know, in essence, it's just a, it's a five-foot change in the setback here. Does that make, does that make sense? And then as, as far as permeability goes, we suggested, you know, all these spots that have this little patch in between, this was a permeable zone. This was a permeable zone, not where there, it was accessible parking, and not where there's any ramp or access to the, to the inner zone. And then there was parking over here, which is proposed employee parking, was not, was not designated permeable, just normal. So we really put it, we did it as a, as a tip of the hat to the aesthetics, just so it would be a greener appearance and a, and a softer look.
So Wesley, have you used this permeable parking in other places in New England?
We have, well, we've done, we, we use it all the time. We haven't done it at this particular scale, but we use it for residential applications when people want to have access to a garage or, or have a. Have a place where, you know, there, there's not a sea of asphalt in their, in the front of their property, so we'll generally pave, you know, a minimal area of their, of their parking and turnaround zone, and then we'll design it so that there's. Tracks is what we call it, that go into a garage or go to a particular place where they want to leave a car. And we've never, you know, we've have many, many places where it's been in, you know, in for over 20 years without incident.
Okay, thank you. And I, I think it's important to just mention also, this is a sort of a tip of the hat to. The, the overall sensitivity to the water, this, the watershed protection zone, which is the dotted line you see going through the proposed greenhouses in the back.
Over here, yeah.
This, that, that's an outer 400-foot band of a, of a sort of a protection zone for a little vernal pool or surface pond back on Tom Bracco's property. At the, I guess, the south.
Yep.
Corner, and. And so, just overall, I know, uh, ground permeability is, is important, just on this particular parcel, and since we're close to that zone, we could very easily just make a pavement.
Yeah. Questions from the, the board on, on this?
Alice?
I just want to point out that if they're gonna use this, this kind of parking space, I think that it would have to be included as part of the waiver as well, because the by, I'm not saying it's a bad idea at all, but I'm just saying our. Our bylaws state, "All off-street parking and loading areas shall be surfaced with asphalctic bituminous cement or other properly bound pavement, so as to provide a durable and dustless surface, and shall be graded and so forth." So this would be a departure from that requirement, and I know that if you don't put it in there. You'd wind up going back to the zoning board to address it, I think. So if you guys like his idea, then it should be a waiver of the solid surface requirement, the design standards. For parking lots, off-street parking.
Alice, do you think that's a zoning or a planning board issue, though?
Right.
What would happen would be if, if you, if you only granted the improved, you know, let's say you granted the whatever it is, 28 parking spaces in the front, right? And that's as far as he went, and then he came back with, for a special permit for this next phase. You know, we, we would be kicking it back to you unless you approved it that way, if that's what he really wants to do, do you know what I mean? Because we don't have the planning board the right to waive the pavement requirement. To depart from the bylaw on that, we just don't have the power. We have, if you have less than 10 spaces, you can, you can, you don't have to have it a bound surface, but if you have 10 or more, which he clearly plans to do, then that's the requirement in the bylaw, which you can waive, but we can't. So, if you're gonna approve his off-street parking plan, you should put in it, including the. However you would define it, the porous center to each parking space is presented, or.
Right, so, so, I mean, I, I would say that this, it, you know, the definition is, is important to parse, because this is paved with asphalctic surface. There's just some percentage, and actually, by the time you count the middle, you know, I said 33%, but by the time you count the middle aisle, assuming that's another third, it's a, it's 33% of two-thirds, so it's, whatever that is, 33 of 66. So it's, you know, something like 20% will be pervious, the other 80% will be.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing that it's not a good idea, I'm just saying it's an obel.
I understand, yeah.
And if you want to do it, I think it should be part of the.
Okay, makes sense.
So, so the whole pull-in and, um, let's call it the center 20 feet, that would all be asphalt?
Absolutely, here, I'll zoom in so you could see it very clearly. So, this little stippled area right here is the permeable zone. Everything else is, 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 uh, normal. So, you know, each car, I'm gonna go up here so you can see, the car will pull in between the dark lines, so, you know, if, if somebody parked in a spot like this, I'll just render a car here. See, there's a gray car. You know, they would be straddling the green space. And then another car would park right here, straddling the green space, and they share, you know, this, if it's three feet on and three feet off, they share this, so they're walking out on pavement too, so your feet theoretically never touch the, anything but pavement. It's only the under part of the car that, that is over the, the green zone.
Is this, is this like strictly an effort to be green, or is this, I mean, it doesn't seem like this would be a, much of a cost savings, it almost seems like it's, it's a hassle to put in.
It, it is, it's strictly an effort to be green, you know, and, you know, unfortunately, like so many things that are green, it's, it's more of a labor of love than it is an economic. Return. But, no, but, you know, that said, I mean, theoretically, each, each little thing you do like this has, has some sort of positive impact that, that gives, you know, is, is working towards the greater good, and that's, that's really the only reason we did it. And since, you know, since this whole effort was really to reduce and mitigate the negative impact of parking, we, we were trying to be as creative and thoughtful as possible to try to make the parking as beautiful and interesting and creative as we possibly could, and this is the best that we could come up with.
It's, it's, it's interesting, I think, looking at it, it looks confusing. How much, how, how depressed is that center area?
Just a few inches, you know, about, you know, two inches.
And then you, you must have like the edges beveled or something, because cars are gonna drive right over that, so you're gonna have edges and.
Yeah, it's called, be hand-tamped, I mean, the, you know, when you install it, you hand-tap the, the edge of the asphalt.
Paper it.
Yeah.
And yeah, this, this was all, this is in an effort to just so more raindrops hit the ground. Since we're on the slope down towards Tom's pond. I mean, we, it's obviously, like Wesley said, it's kind of a labor of love, we could very easily just make it. Pavement.
Yeah. Now, now, do you have, do you have a civil engineer designed, do you have like water infiltration and thing, plans that are being developed, I mean, or?
No, not yet, so, if you, if I go, I, if I go, can just go back a little bit, um, we originally proposed a special permit application for kind of a large greenhouse in the back of the property. And then we ran into the watershed protection zone, so, um, the first, I do have engineering for this greenhouse, it's for a slightly different shape than what this is, so we've actually, you know, we've stepped the greenhouse down to sort of accommodate. That, um, that zone, that outer 400-foot buffer zone of Tom's pond. So, what I, and this goes back to the last meeting when somebody brought it up, it's usually. You guys are usually giving a variance based on a rejection from a, a building, an application, so. Bill Murray from Place Associates, he told us to go this route, which was seek a variance for the parking lot in front, because that's where we need, need the bulk of the property, of the parking. Once we know we can put the parking up there, you know, within that 100-foot setback. Then, you know, I'll go ahead and begin, yeah, I mean, I have, I have two engineering firms, one for the greenhouse, and then one for, you know, all the stormwater and everything else, but, you know, obviously, that, that's big bucks, so. Bill wanted us to, you know, he basically said, you know, "We proposed a parking lot here with our original plan, which was engineered," and, um, you know, he said, "We can't even accept this because this parking needs, requires zoning relief." So he sent us to you, that's why we never got a rejection from Roland, because we never got a, we never were able to submit it.
Okay, all right, so, uh, sorry, um, Bowie, if, if, if we had approved the parking plan the way that you were proposing it. Is your design from your civil going to be going back to the planning board for approval?
I'm, we're just gonna need some additional reengineering, because we had to reduce the size of the greenhouses by half. So, the stormwater plan will have to be redone, uh, you know, the cistern, you know, it's, it's, since, you know, there's obviously no, no city water sewer, it's, it's, it's complicated, so. No, the greenhouse has, has changed, and, I mean, we are going to need to get in, once we know that we can put a parking lot up there, just, you know, just like the pizza joint. Where we eat every day, Hubbardson House of Pieces, excellent, everybody. Then, then I will unleash the engineers on, you know, complete stormwater, so on and so forth, because we at least know when we're spending that money. I'm gonna be engineering, uh, you know, they'll be engineering a plan for this parking plan, not, you know, like, you know, not, otherwise, it's, it gets a little, it gets a little complicated, because I think then we have to. If we can't park up here, then we basically have to start dropping those, that front building.
So maybe this is a, maybe that was a question for Alice, is he gonna end up needing to go back in front of your board? If we approved his parking design with his civil engineering stamped?
Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so, our, the special permit that we gave him is only for outdoor grow, period, it's what he's doing right now, so he's gotta come back for us no matter what, to get his shop, you know, get another special permit. So at that time. You know, had you granted him permission to put all these parking spots in the front setback, that would be decided, right, so we wouldn't, otherwise, we couldn't do that. So we would. So he's right in a way, he gets to design it. Considering what we've given him, but then we would also review it. But we wouldn't, we couldn't overrule you. You know, we don't have that power, right? Does that make sense?
No, that makes sense, and that wasn't a matter of, uh, worry about overruling, it was just a matter that eyes were gonna get put back on it again, once the engineering's been complete on it, you know, we're, we're just gonna give the approval that, yes, we, we agree, or don't agree, you know, whether we do or don't. On this parking, but I wanted to make sure that somebody was gonna put eyes on it and make sure that his civil engineering had, had done their due diligence.
And that, that will be Bill Murray, and I think everybody knows Bill's gonna be all over this.
Bowie, can I ask you one more question?
Yep.
So we do have a maximum coverage of 50%. Have you thought about that in putting this of a lot?
Oh, oh, yeah, this is all within, within that, yep.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
Yeah, and I, I just want to chime in very briefly about the process. I, I, I mean, the way I understood this, this ZBA approve, or the, the, the variance approval. Was really, it's a preliminary approval, and it's quite conceptual in nature, it's just saying, yes, we think that, you know, we will allow the, you to develop a plan where parking is, you know, non-conforming to the zoning. And all of the engineering, you know, all of the formal, uh, uh, you know, work that, that goes into submitting a complicated set of plans like this will commence, and it just doesn't make sense to do it. At this point, because it's like putting the cart before the horse. Does that, does that, does that clarify things? So it's really like, why do it unless you, you know that you can actually put a parking lot in a spot like this?
Okay.
So.
Yep, no, thank you.
And, and also, just going back to, you know, Bill Murray is, you know, he's a specialist on all this stuff, and. Like, we're gonna be working closely with Bill under sort of his guidance as to just, you know, what is, you know, what he's gonna be looking for and, and so forth, so. This is really, just like Wes said, the conceptual layout before we really start spending the big bucks, and, and. It'd also be noted, we could hit engineering snags along the way, we probably will, who knows, some, these greenhouses might not fly, maybe they can't drain them well enough, because for who know, who knows why, and then, you know, so, I'm, there's definitely gonna be many issues that arise, but, um, this is just a sort of a, a conceptual. Idea of what we would like to do, otherwise, we have to start tearing buildings down.
So I, I guess that my concern from the last meeting, and I think it continues now, is, you know, typically, we only see. Variances, and we only give variances after we've had a denial, and even in our zoning bylaws for the town, it, it talks about a, you know, once a denial is given by the building inspector, it's, it's a clock. That we have to follow along with this, you know, this, these timeframes. So that seems to me that it, you know, a denial triggers the request for a variance, and to, to go off on that a little bit more, when we talked at the last meeting, we, we talked about a number of, of other businesses on Gardner Road that has parking, you know, right up into the road. You know, Rieta Ranch is one, and a Time and a Place is another, and. The Country, the, the Country Hen is another, so, you know, conceivably, the building inspector could, you know, look at that, and said, "We have precedence set right here and, and grant you this building permit without a variance." So that's why, you know, it's one of the reasons we wanted the building inspector on, online tonight, is to try to get through some of that to see if, you know, if a zoning variance is even required.
Well, since it's a special permit, I just feel like it's, nobody really wants to touch it. Just in terms of, at least that's kind of the way I was sort of, Bill sort of made it sound, is that it, since, I, he couldn't accept it as a submission, because the plan required. Required so much relief for parking, like, he couldn't accept it to pass it along.
Bill couldn't, or the zoning.
Well, the, the. The, um, the, uh, planning board. The planning board.
Yeah, the building inspector does, typically doesn't see it until you get all your planning approvals, so, you know, so the procedure would be planning approvals. That, you know, that, that conform to all the zoning requirements, and then, once you have all your approvals, you take it to the building inspector and commence with the building, but in this case, because it doesn't, you know, there were these variances required. Bill had suggested that we do this first.
Scott?
Roland texted me, he's having some connection issues, so he's not able to get on, I guess he tried to call in. His phone, so I don't know what's going on on his end.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, um, off of your question, I'm a, I'm a commercial contractor, and I'm on a job in Shrewsbury right now, that I had to get zoning approval before the customer, uh, before we actually applied for the building permit. For, to get some, we knew that we were gonna have some issues with, with approvals, and we did have several meetings with the zoning board prior to applying for the permit, so I don't know if that helps a precedent somewhere.
Scott, Bill Holmans?
Go, Bill.
I, um, I have to apologize to Bowie and his crew, all the years that I've been on the zoning board of appeals, we've never had an application for a special permit, nor have we ever had an application where we haven't. for a special permit, nor have we ever had an application where we haven't had a letter from the building inspector's office to deny what you wanted to do. So this was all new territory. I think we all discussed this at our last meeting. Personally, I feel that this was an existing property, as the, all the other ones. So you have the ongoing issue and of the, the existing buildings and what you're gonna do with them and additional cost, if you have to move them down, take them down and move them out of the way and make it all one building. But we've never had an application to, to grant a variance and get it in writing without the letter from the building inspector. And I've never been on a special permit before, so I don't know the aspect either. But I don't think the board really knows where to go here. That's why we wanted the building inspector to give us his, his feelings on what was gonna happen here.
But, it's Gail. I just wanted to mention something to a few statements regarding variances. I'm just looking at the bylaws, and it does say, Board of Appeals, Section 10.2, under D, it says, "A true copy of all site plans, special permit application and decisions of other town agencies which involve the proposed use." So that is supposed to be included, as far as what I'm reading in the package before we can even vote on a variance? I mean, I think, and then I was reading in the package from the applicant that there, it says, "Paper crane is eager to receive guidance from the zoning board of appeals regarding the following variances." So I'm under the impression they're not asking us to vote on any of this right now, but I could be wrong. Are they just asking for our input to what we think may be acceptable? And then I, I guess, I assume we would vote on all of it at one time. And I believe that the planning board needs to approve the site plan before we do.
They, they can't.
I know that's a lot, but.
Yeah, this, the planning board cannot approve a site plan that needs zoning relief.
Okay.
So.
They seen this whole plan yet?
Yeah, they, they saw it. They, they saw it back in November. So that's, that's when I originally submitted it. And, I mean, I can, I can easily give you the, I mean, I think, you know, we've, whatever we've included in this packet, but this was the, again, like, the, we don't have stormwater drainage in a complete special permit packet. Nothing was rejected because we, we weren't, we withdrew it and then came, came to the zoning board, so.
I guess I'm still a little confused, but, okay.
I mean, my, my understanding, I, I understand this is complicated, but, I mean, maybe I could shed a little bit of light in the way I, I understand this. Is that the approval, I think, I think that we're, Bowie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we are seeking a vote, and we were hoping that the vote would, would affirm that the, the plan that we're putting forward, which is a conceptual plan, and it could be defined in a particular way, like, for example, the, the parking definition could be something like X number of spaces with X setback. So in this case, it would be, I think it's 24 spaces that are 33 or 35 feet from the, the road edge will be permitted in a, you know, in a particular, in a design, as the design moves forward into site plan approval and special permit approval. And that would just, that would give this project the legs it needs to, to, for Bowie to move into the next phase and invest the tens of thousands of dollars that it takes to do the engineering and the design and all of that effort. And to design it based on having the parking in this particular area. If the parking can't go here, then it's, it's, you know, it's a waste of, of time for Bowie to move forward and do any design that, that assumes the parking can go in a spot where it can't go. So the intention was just to sort of rule out, you know, to, to, to clarify these particular parameters, which, which I think each one of them could be defined, you know, with some sort of language that says, yes, it can happen in this zone, and yes, it can happen in this particular way, and it's limited by the definition. So it doesn't mean, you know, we can't put 100 spaces in that area next to the street. We can only put a certain amount, and they have to be X distance, which would ensure that, you know, or the language could say, consistent with the site plan presented with, you know, consistent in, in a strategy or concept with the plan presented in the, in the, you know, to the ZBA for the variance. So something, that's what I envisioned. And Bowie, is, is that consistent with your understanding? I mean, I, I felt like that's what Bill Murray was asking us to do, and he did.
It, well, well, it is. And I, and I also might add is that I did have an, a complete, almost complete set of engineering done for the initial submission. And it wasn't even accepted, you know, that was to the tune of about $28,000. So I don't want to do that again. That's, that's the point, is, is that basically Bill, more or less, was like, you know, you're, you're this big plan that has all, you know, as you can see, a majority of the part, you know, about half the parking is in, is within, he was like, the planning board can't touch this until they know you will be granted relief. So I actually did have the whole first round engineered. And there were some problems with it, but, you know, we did kind of like give it a shot. And then Bill sort of stopped us in our tracks and was like, you know, we had other problems, like the watershed protection zone and the rear of the property and whatnot. But, you know, he was like, first and foremost, everything that is in the, you know, within that hundred foot setback, you need a variance and you need to go to the ZBA. I, I basically, I can't accept, we can't accept this, planning board can't accept it yet.
You know, I, it, it almost feels it's a timing issue to me. You know, I think there's a lot of, you know, precedent with parking that goes out to the road up and down that strip. So maybe in a, in a way, I'm less concerned about that aspect. But I'm really more concerned with just, you know, what is the, the proper sequence of events? I mean, you just said, you know, that you can't go to the planning board for a site plan, but couldn't you go to the planning board with this plan? I mean, the end result might be you have to take down those front two buildings. But, you know, the conceptual part of it, you know, you know, could keep on going forward, I would think.
Well, Bill, Bill told me no. He told, he told me I can't. So that was, you know, and he, and I withdrew my packet. So I think, I mean, I think if that would have been an option, he probably would have said, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think he would have maybe suggested that, you know, deal with the site plan and seek the relief from the planning board. But that's not what he said. He said the ZBA has to, has to grant you, you know, this parking.
Mr. Chairman. Andy Bond. I understand your little bit of hesitancy on, on procedurally going to the zoning board of appeals first, but I, I know we've worked on projects similar to Mr. Ledger, where we knew that getting relief was the critical path for a project. You know, our scope as a zoning board of appeals is to look at each individual case and then grant the waivers if we see appropriate based on hardships owing to the land. Is how we should be looking at every particular application. In this particular piece of, or this particular application in front of us, we have a hardship relating to the watershed protection district. The use of the part of the property itself is pretty restrictive, in which case they've got some security issues they gotta worry about in terms of circulating around the facility. And there was a handful of other ones, but those are the two big ones that, that hang out to me. Oh, and the, the existing building not meeting the setback, although I, I think that's a pre-existing non-conforming issue, not necessarily there. That's the way the building inspector felt it was, so be it. So I'm, as me personally, I'm not concerned about, you know, acting on a, on this application so that they can proceed. And that's why I was particularly asking about what the soil conditions are, are they gonna be able to put the septic system under a parking lot right there? Are they allowed to put the septic system in the watershed protection district? That I, I don't know off the top of my head. I was asking about the, you know, there is, I know they're going to the edge of pavement, but the, the statute is actually to the right of way. And so that's that line there on the front, that's our relief line. And so I was asking about ways to creep that up, or if they needed, if they truly felt they needed that many parking spaces on that lower left-hand corner. That would give you a little bit more space away from the right of way. Those were the concerns that I had about the project. Can they scoot, can they scoot the parking lot closer to the building? I know you'll, you'll have a loss of a couple stalls that way if you brought it closer. Now, I was also asking about grade or the septic system in the front, because it does drop down about four or five feet from the road. And if you've got high groundwater, you're gonna have to pick the parking lot up to get it over the septic system. So. And lastly, they're gonna have to contend with the well, where they're gonna put that, because I don't think you'll meet. I can't really scale off of this, this project, but I mean, you've got 100 feet from the existing wall that's in the island, goes almost across the whole parking lot. So they, they got a few things they gotta deal with, but I, I think we should try to give them some kind of guidance on, on what direction they want to go. And we can write our decision, you know, we gave them, we'll give them the parameters of the decision, and you can't exceed, or we're gonna grant so many feet of relief from the various sections of the bylaw. That's my thoughts, Scott.
Okay. Other questions? All right, I mean, are we, as a board, are we ready to close this public hearing?
I mean, just a direct question, and maybe Bowie or Wesley, you know, what, what do you think about the soil conditions there in the front yard? You know, are you gonna be able to do what you, you need to do? Can you slide that closer to the building?
You know, I've, I've, I've been going back and forth. I have two different engineers. I think the one that hasn't gotten back to me yet, I just have to check. I can, I can get the perk information. It was, I can't, I can't remember. I believe, yeah, I believe it was just sitting, you know, I was there all day while they were doing the perk test, and I was talking to the nice lady from, I believe it was the health department, the woman who owns Ladybug Farm. It wasn't great, but it wasn't terrible, is what I remember, basically. Well, we were standing there, you know, for hours and hours. I'll, I can try and get, you know, get that to you. I mean, again, this is, I, I, it was okay. I know it was acceptable. But, I mean, I can try and get that for you tomorrow.
Ju- just as a gauge, Bowie, and probably isn't, so it's still somewhat applicable to the ZBA. If you're enjoying lunch at the Pizza Palace there, and you look out the backyard, you can see the septic system, and you can see that, that mound, if I remember correctly, out behind the building. That's comparable to what you're probably gonna look at. You know, I, I don't think the soil's transitioned from a nasty glacial till into a beautiful sand and gravel across the road. So you're, you might have to work with the contours in that site to make that work. And like I said, your finished floor and that building in the front, much well. It's almost that great, if I, I'm looking at it on street view.
Yeah, it's just about as accurate.
So you, something your, your engineers are gonna have to deal with, regardless of the, the relief that we grant or make.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm, you know, this is, like I said, I'm, we're, the company's gonna, we're gonna throw some dough, you know, dough, once we know that at least some parking, you know, is, is available here in the front. And like I said, we could hit, we could hit major snags with the greenhouse, we could hit, snagged all over the place, and the plan could change. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure it's going to change many times. I mean, I don't mind, you know, obviously, playing board and, and Bill Murray are gonna be, you know, watching it closely. But I also don't mind, like, you know, circling back with you guys if, long we sort of get this preliminary vote to, I don't know, I mean, again, I'm not really quite sure how this works, but just so we can at least know it's, it could be granted. If everything perked out, great, and so forth.
Yeah, Scott, I don't, it, it.
I wish Roland was here.
I, I think, I think regardless, we gotta make some kind of motion. I don't think the planning board, and I know Chairwoman's on the call, but they're not gonna accept the application without some kind of action from us. And, and like I iterated before, you know, we're, we're setting the, the table a little bit for what they gotta work within, to meet, meet the, the, the planning board's gonna deal with paving and grading and drainage and access and traffic circulation and fire department access and all the other particulars that are gonna come along with the site plan review.
Thanks.
I have one question, please, or two.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank Andy and Gail for the comments earlier. I think they were very informative, and they helped me realize a lot of what's going on here. So I do want to thank them. I guess this is for Bowie. Just out of curiosity, did you ever look into pursuing either renting or utilizing space, either on the property directly across the street from this parcel, or try to get the bus company to allocate 10, six to 12 parking spots that you could lease or rent for your facility, and your employees could just walk across the street and boom, they'd be there, just out of curiosity?
I have not. That's a great idea, in general. Just most people are wary of anything having to do with marijuana business.
No, they would just be parking. Your employees would just be parking. They wouldn't be growing anything or doing anything. There'd be, we need X number of spaces.
I agree.
Running into some headwinds here, we can't seem to resolve.
I have not. I don't know, I don't know who owns that. I'm, I'm sure Mallory could help me figure it out pretty quickly. And, I mean, they certainly do have a lot of space over there, and that would, you know, if it was financially, you know, I'm sure it would be, I mean, that could be definitely help us out.
Particularly at the bus company, because then, instead of you, as you, as your team has noted on three occasions now, you guys don't want to spend money and have it wasted, and then have to re devise or replan or, or reassemble another whole new plan, et cetera.
Right.
So I was, I was wondering if it would be cheaper just to go there and say, you know, we could purchase six lots or whatever, six parking spaces, or at least six parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, I will certainly put that on my list for things to do tomorrow is to start looking into that for the employee parking. Definitely, the, you know, the important thing, I believe, at least for, you know, this particular situation is, this is a busy street, and this is gonna be a busy store. It's gonna be a lot busier than I think even people realize, and I'm gonna need these parking spaces. And they're not, people aren't gonna be parked there long. They're, they're in, they're inside for, just like a liquor store, less than three minutes. They're in and out. And, you know, pre-pandemic, we were, there was about 7,200 cars a day on driving past this store. I mean, I just think 20, I mean, 25 parking spaces is, if you, if you go to some of the other, the smaller stores and the smaller dispensaries that are, you know, Caroline's Cannabis and Roots and Lunenburg, they're small shops with big parking lots. And they're full, in general. In general, I'm not, I'm not sure why I'm rambling on about this, but I am going to look into the bus thing, but I do think you know, and especially now with the flea market starting up. I mean, Sundays, it's like, it's a traffic jam on sixty-eight. And, you know, all the, I, I think, I think we're going to need them. But I would love to go grab a handful from across the street and I am going to get on that tomorrow.
But with that being said, even if you did get those spaces, you would still need zoning relief for the park, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's true. I, I would just say, you know, in, in this particular scheme, we designed it so there's about eight employee parking spaces. And it's about a seventh of the spaces that are here. So, you know, it, it, it puts a dent in it and it, you know, it may enable the removal of some of these, you know, most sensitive spaces. But if you take eight out of, I think there's thirteen spaces in this row. You know, there's still five, five here, you know, and again, you know, that would allow for some reconfiguring or some, you know, some sharpening up a little bit. But, but it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't remove the need to ask for relief. Let's put it that way. It would ease the burden a little bit, but it would, it would, it would just lower the, lower the bar on the amount of cars that would be in that, in the zone.
In the, the amount of relief that you're looking for is you know, you, you've given us a couple of different numbers if you did it at an angle for parking and versus, you know, the, the way they are, you know, originally drawn. So you're looking at twenty-eight point four feet or thirty-three point three feet?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I personally think that the, you know, we would have put the angle parking in if we thought it was a, a better solution, but I, I mean, I think that the way we're landscaping the, the site that that five foot of savings really won't have an aesthetic. You won't really be able to notice a difference. So I would say, you know, I mean, maybe the, the, the in the writing, you could be, you know, please, please engineer this so that the parking is as far from the street as is possible. And, you know, and, and, you know, we see twenty-nine, you know, there's twenty-nine spaces here and there's, I'm sorry, twenty-five here and four twenty-five spaces in this lot and four spaces over here. That's, those are the spaces for which we're asking for relief. You know, they come as close as twenty-nine point three feet to the edge of the road. Something like that is how I would imagine the, you know, I think that's what we're asking for. You know, some sort of, that, that would be, those would be the parameters. And then, for example, on the, the, the second thing we're asking for is relief from the requirement that the buildings are built outside of the hundred foot setback. So this building has fifty-two square feet, which is in the setback. So that would read something like fifty-two square feet of the existing building is within the setback and, you know, the, the variance will allow that fifty-two feet to stay in the setback. Rather than destroy the building or destroy a part of the building and et cetera, et cetera. So each one of these has a, you know, a fairly simple descriptive way out that just defines the parameters, you know, that, that, that it just allows us to move forward with the plan with some sort of degree of guidance or clarity that yes, we can design it with this fifty-two square feet sticking into the hundred foot setback zone. And we can design this so that there's twenty-nine parking spaces that are as far away from the road as possible. But, but, you know, still allow for nice green space, good safe circulation, et cetera, et cetera. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's sometimes a little bit more specific than we, we typically get. You know, I think typically we would say something to their, to the effect that, you know, we're granting a zoning variance to twenty-eight point four feet from the hundred foot setback. Or, or the converse of that, you know, with the math. And not really necessarily talk about, you know, twenty-eight parking spots or maximizing parking spots or engineering it away from the road. But, you know, that, that depends on who gives, who brings forth the, the, you know, the, the, the motion.
And again, the, the plan, the plan will, once we get into the engineering. You know, granted that this is all, you know, all the stormwater collection and, I mean, it's going to be pretty extensive. This is, this could change. I mean, Bill, you know, we can end up with less parking than this, depending on, like you said, the perk test, the what, and, and I will get you the perk test in the next day or two. I have it. I just have to dig it out. But, you know, that, this could change. It's just knowing that we will you know, we had, Bill, Bill just wanted us to get the preliminary approval that we could at least we could at least begin.
Scott, Bill Holmans?
Yes, Bill.
I just feel that it's unfair to the applicant to have him come to us to apply for a variance to our zoning bylaws, which haven't been denied yet. So we could, what should we do? Make a, make a motion? Well, just in case the building inspector denies. Number one, two, three, four, and five. We may or we will, or we will not grant the variance for that. I don't understand how we can go forward without a denial from, from the zoning, zoning person. I don't, I've never sat on a, a special permit, so I don't know that aspect, but we've always had a denial from the, the building inspector saying zoning section five point six permits only one building per lot. We're seeking a variance for that. And I think that's the proper way to do this unless I'm totally wrong here.
May I offer just one comment also, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Bill, I, I understand what you're saying. I agree with you wholeheartedly, but we can't give them the variance because the building that the town allowed to erect is within that hundred foot buffer. It's an existing building. Town allowed it to go in. Previous planning board, previous building inspector approved it.
So right, but we haven't received a denial yet. How do we, I'm, I'm all in favor of giving a variance if it's reasonable. But we've never done one in all the years I've been on this board without the night of allowing for it to go forward. So I don't know if this is a, a new area for us. If it is, I'd like to get guidance from somebody to tell us how do we do this? Do we make a motion to accept all these variances that haven't been denied?
I, I quick question to the two gentlemen that spoke, I think it was Mr. Baum and
Bill Holmans.
And Bill, not, I don't think it was you. I think it was Mr. Redger, you guys both were talking about how you had done projects. I, I was just going to ask you about those projects that you referenced. Were those straight denials that it doesn't sound like they were denials that you were working on. It sounded like the, the homeowner or the business owner was seeking relief prior to a submission. Is that right?
In my case, that's correct. We didn't, we didn't apply for the permit until we had already had zoning relief on it. The, the, it's a commercial project. It's a million dollar, you know, one point one million nine acre project and we got zoning relief prior to me applying for my permit with the building inspector. And I'm, right now I'm four weeks into my civil work on it and it's a three month project. So this has all happened within the past, you know, sixty, ninety days.
And you're sure? And so what were, I, I, what was the, I mean, what was the language? So then this is this is similar, then it's, it's somewhat, I mean, I think, is that Bill Holmans, is that what you're, are you concerned about? Like the language is how to sort of say you guys are approving this thing that has not been denied?
Well, that, that's my biggest thing. And this is a small town. We, I've never been involved with a big project like this, so I could be totally wrong in the process. But it's just what I've always done on being on the board. And Scott, is this legal what we're talking about doing? Given the a variance to these, to these issues prior to, to having a letter of denial?
You see, I, I've been kind of stuck on that myself because, I mean, I, the bylaws say specifically that you know, we, we act upon a denial or enforcement, you know, enforcement ruling.
And that's what I'm stuck on. I, I apologize for this. That's why we asked for the building inspector to be at this hearing so we can talk and get this ironed out. And it's unfortunate. It's not, it hasn't happened.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
It, it ties into what Bowie had asked, so a lot of the projects that I work on that entail some form of a variance or waiver or even a special permit from the zoning board of appeals in, in different communities. What does happen, particularly in the city of Worcester, is, is you go to the building department with your plans. Sorry, building permit plans, just something similar to what, what they're presenting to us. And you get what's called a zoning determination form, I think is a, is what, what they do. And that's kind of an in writing mechanism. That when you go to apply to the zoning board of appeals and the, and the planning board, because they do have jurisdiction over special permit uses. You have that signed off by the building commissioner saying, this is your permit path that you need to do with this proposal. Now it's up to you what sequence you want to do them. They don't say go to the zoning board of appeals first, but you know, similar to this, if you don't get your variance from the zoning board of appeals, you're not going to go for a site plan review in front of a planning board because it's, you're, you're already denied. So it, it's, this is not unusual, but maybe the thing to do would be to ask the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer to just put, say that based on this proposal, these waivers that are required. And, and we've achieved the same written mechanism that, that, that we're, we're stumbling on as a, as a board. Or so it's not necessarily denial, but you know that this is what has to be done in order to pass.
Get it, get it in, sort of get it in writing basically from Roland that in, in terms of this being the process Bill told me to undertake.
Yeah, yeah. So it, it's something in writing. So we're not, as a, as a board, we're not concerned that, yeah, typically. And, and Bill's right and he's been on the board a lot longer than I have. All we, we typically have denials that come through and denials like yeah, everything's been in denial. I don't think we've had any path to my memory where someone came in initially and did it. Naturally, we haven't had a, a project of this scope come to our, through our, through this, through this board either.
And personally, Andy, I don't think Bill Murray can deny the application to have him come to us because he's not part of the process. You know, it's unfortunate that he's, this is happening and caused on the way for us not to be able to do anything, but to follow the proper steps. So we're within the, the legal limits of the law and, and the building code. I, I think it's important that we have that done.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's my suggestion is just right. It does a and we can also get his interpretation. He is in zoning enforcement officer on, on this application process, which I'm not shame on me, hundred percent to the letter on this in town, but and that's just a suggestion. No, we could chew on.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And, and, you know, we may find that Roland says it's pre-existing and there's other buildings and other businesses that are that has, has parking, you know, closer than, you know, thirty-three feet to the road. And there is no need for, you know, this, these two variances.
And, and if that's the case, then, then amen and good luck to the, to the applicants.
Yeah.
You know, and then we, we don't have to worry about making it and, you know, kind of button this thing up for them. And then they can take that to this, to the planning board for, for their special permit. Is that for use, Bowie? That was triggering you?
Sorry, is it for you?
A permit for use?
I believe so. Alright, so.
Alice, Bill Holmans, can I ask you, what is your opinion? What do you think on this whole process here?
Am I patched in? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, I, I mean, just my opinion and I'm not the board. Is we would not have accepted a plan with parking in the setback. I know this because we didn't accept a plan with parking in the setback. Which was proposed by the storage unit facility at thirty-six Gardner Road. We made him move it.
That was new construction.
It was new construction and we made him, it was new construction. That's true. And we made him move the part. We couldn't, you know, we didn't let him do it. So I'm thinking you know, we, Bowie came with this preliminary drawing, which kind of looked like this back in November, like he said. And Bill said, you got problems because you, you know, we don't allow this to we don't allow parking in the setback and this is novel because it's pre-work in an existing building. So I don't know, you know, there are two different avenues. One is what can we do because it was a pre-existing use. How much do we, and how much do we have to sort of start from scratch? So I think I mean, it is true that he would need a special permit to do this because it's a marijuana facility. It absolutely requires a special permit. Unlike the storage locker, which was just site plan review, this needs a special permit. And we wouldn't, we determined based on Bill's, Bill Murray's advice that we you know, couldn't really accept his plan for a special permit because you know, it, it didn't comply.
But Alice, do you agree that Bill Murray has the authority to say they cannot go to the building inspector with the application of the planning board? And to come to the zoning board of appeals, the application without a written denial or something from the building inspector's office, which is what we rely on to start our process.
I don't think he can speak for Roland. He only speaks for the planning board, right? So. Um, but, but my question with Roland is Roland could say, Roland would say, I can't give you a any kind of a building permit because it requires a special permit. You got to go to planning. So you're sort of at this catch twenty-two situation, right? Where do you start?
Yeah, that was my understanding. Like, you know, the, the building inspector has nothing to talk to us about because we don't have a real project until there's a special permit and a and a site plan review.
Right. They just cannot do it without a special permit.
Well, I think with all fairness to the applicant here, I don't think we should keep going around this merry-go-round. I think we should come up with a process to make it so they can actually move forward with their, with their application and stop that process. If I know they could say, say, we got to wait for this one, but this one's not going to do it. We, we've got to come up with a plan here. This isn't fair.
I mean, if, if you like, I can have the planning board send the zoning board of appeals a letter saying we can't accept a special permit. Please out until these issues are resolved. I mean, we could, but we would just say we don't have any authority.
Right. Our building inspector has the authority, Alice. We don't. And neither does the planning board.
The planning board cannot grant parking in a setback. It can't yet.
No, no. And, and I don't think we're suggesting that. I think what we're suggesting that they should through the building inspector first and, and then have him direct what those, the next steps will be.
It's got?
Yeah.
Question from Gail. Just, just on that, if usually we vote on a denial or, or to override the building inspector's decision and based on that, we need a unanimous vote. But if we just vote for a straight up variance, is it just four out of five? I mean, is the voting requirement different? So I think that might be something to consider as well.
It, it is, it is four out of five.
It is. So it's different. Okay.
Uh, going back to, I think, maybe what Mr. Ledger said, or it might have been Mr. Baum. Is there a, what did you say regarding that other project? Now, there was, um, there was a pathway like in terms of paperwork, like I could just basically get a not, sorry, this project is not zoning compliant or something? And that would sort of be a, a good enough denial?
Oh, it's called the zoning determination form. I do have one in office that I can email.
Oh, it's called the zoning determination form. I do have one in office that I can email over to.
Now, is that something that Roland, like, you know, I know Roland won't usually, so far, he won't touch anything with fifty-six Gardiner Road until the special, until some special permit is, is approved. Is, I mean, I guess, could we, yeah, I guess that would be a thing. I could, we could try and submit it to him and say, just ask him, say, we are seeking a parking variance because, you know, we're not able to submit a site plan review for a special permit and the ZBA is not really willing to take it up and put a vote to it unless there is some sort of a formal denial of something.
Yeah, I can, I'll get that over to you. I'm not sure, like you said, if he's gonna touch it without the special permit or not, but I'll get it over to you in the morning.
Okay. Something happened to my screen. I can only see Andy Baum now. Why is that? Not that that's a bad thing.
You, you win the prize.
Sometimes if you pin a particular person, then you get stuck with them.
Oh, oh, shoot. Oh, remove pins. Thank you, okay.
Hey Scott?
Yes.
Bill again. I was just looking at the actual application filled out by the applicant, the, the actual request. And on the form, it says, basically, there's two options they have. Answer question seven or eight on a separate sheet. Basically, if requesting an appeal, which they're not, if requesting a variance, which they are, that's number eight on their form. And it says, describe what circumstances there are that relate to the soil condition, state of topography of the land or structures in question, especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which they are located. I mean, basically, I'm just asking, it sounds to me like they have two options in their request. And they do have the option to request a variance.
Oh, I see, instead of a, um, appeal to a denial.
Right, yeah, the actual application form gives the two options. And they, it says, under, the undersigned hereby request the Hubbardson zoning board of appeals to check one of the following, request a variance or overrule the decision. And there is request of variance.
Right, but it's also says it state the reason for the denial of the building.
Right, oh.
And I think that's, that's.
Oh, it does, you're right.
Yeah, that's where we get stuck.
State the reason for denial of building permit as given by the building commissioner.
And I think that's the whole reason why this whole. Because.
So, you know, so Bowie and, and Wes, I think, you know, you know, my suggestion is, is to talk to Roland in the building department. And I think we can take the cue from him. If he says, you know, I can't touch it because X, Y, and Z, and we get that communicated to us. That's, you know, then we know our path. If he denies, you know, this based on what he sees and knows, then obviously we also have our path. I, I think we have to start there with, with the building inspector. And I'm, I'm sorry, he's not here tonight. You know, the intent was is to get that discussion with him.
Okay, and, alright.
So, Scott, Bill Holmans, Mallory, how can we speed up this process to help him? Because they're on a very tight timeframe here.
I think we have a plan.
Okay.
Right?
As of June fifteenth, too, well, actually, as of the twenty-ninth, so next week, we can meet in person again. Um, to alleviate any issues with connectivity like Roland was having tonight. So I don't know if that's another option that you guys want to move forward with. As of the fifteenth June, we have to meet in person. Um, we have no option, but as of the twenty-ninth, we can meet in person.
Twenty-ninth of June?
May.
My, my only issue is here, I, I know they're on a tight timeframe here to get there. If they're gonna go forward with their business, they have to get going here. So personally, I'd like to do this as quickly as we can for them.
The twenty-ninth is Friday.
Oh, I thought you said June twenty-ninth. I'm sorry. I'm having a bad connection night here, too. I'm, I'm not hearing anything. So that's fine with me.
All right, any, anything else from the board or Alice? Or Bowie and Wes?
Um, it's okay, could, could, sure, will, will you guys just tell me, someone tell me exactly what I'm gonna do now? We're, I'm gonna get the sheet from Mallory and we're gonna send it to Roland, or are we gonna do something on the twenty-ninth?
No, send it to me, send it to me Bowie, and then I'll get it to Roland. We'll have to wait for Roland's response.
Okay.
If Roland needs something from the planning board, he can ask us. We meet again on the third.
Okay. All right, and are we going to spend, wait to schedule another ZBA meeting?
What are your thoughts, Mallory? Will Roland be able to turn this around?
I'm hoping he can turn it around. I can't, I can't give a definite form because I never know which way it's gonna go with him. He, on the form, he has thirty days to answer response, but I hope he'd understand the urgency and get it taken care of a lot sooner than that.
I mean, would, would, I, I think I asked this last time we met, but would it, I mean, I, I often, in my, you know, in the process of designing something, we'll call a building inspector and, and just ask for advice. Ask, I mean, would it be inappropriate for us to contact Roland? And ask, you know, and, and discuss the situation with him?
You can try. Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't see why he wouldn't. That's his job, so.
Well, that would be great, yeah.
Okay.
Scott, Bill Holmans, I make a motion, we continue this hearing.
Okay, do I have a sec, second?
A second.
Any discussion?
How can we leave, set or not set the date for the next hearing though?
We're, we're kind of stuck, are we not? I mean, until Roland does make a ruling, because if he has thirty days, we set the next meeting in two weeks, we're gonna cancel it.
I think you have to continue to a date certain, is my understanding.
Can we set it to a date next week? Is that reasonable?
I, it's reasonable with me.
Next is, uh, next Wednesday is the second of June. Is that too soon? Or should we go another week?
Roland, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's all, all depends on if Roland will respond to a request to sort of, you know, deem this not zoning compliant or not, right?
Well, my, my biggest reason here, folks, is that we've already continued this once for the same reason. And we couldn't get this remedied because we don't have the building inspector here. I don't think it's fair to make them wait. So I, personally, I like to be fair about the whole thing, because I know they're on a timeframe for their business to start this. We should do it as quickly as we can and make it work. Maybe we set a date for next week. If that's not gonna work, we can kick it back another week.
Or do you wanna try to just go for two weeks and go from Monday to the seventh?
That's fine. I mean, as long as, as long as, you know, it's not a conflict of, if it's, we're not, you know, we're sort of openly saying it's not gonna be a concrete date, just because we won't necessarily have an answer by then.
I, I think we all want you to have a date in, in to move this along.
Well, we all wanna know the, the timeframe constraint, too. And hopefully, yeah, take that into consideration.
All right, great. Let's, let's try for that. If that's all right with everybody, I would say two weeks and we'll try and get some sort of a formal in writing response that this is not zoning compliant and you guys should pick it up from Roland.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the ideal, yes.
Great.
Mallory, the, the seventh, is that an in-person meeting?
It's up to you guys.
It'd be, it'd be nice.
Scott, Bill Holmans, I'm in favor of in-person.
Me too.
So we have a, a motion and we have a second and we had discussion, any more discussion on our motion? So our motion is we're continuing the meeting until June seventh. All in favor?
Bill Holmans, aye.
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 Right, thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, anyone, everyone. I, I'll get this going with Mallory and try and get a response to you all from Roland as quickly as possible.
All right, thanks.
Send it over, so you'll have it, you should have it already.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thanks Bowie, thanks for your patience.
No problem. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. See you.
Okay, bye Wesley. Um, do I have a motion to close the public portion of our meeting?
Scott, real quick, I just shared with the group the zoning determination form that I'm familiar with, just through your edification. And I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alice, you have to do the same.
Um, so I don't know, do I still have three planning board members? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn from, from one of them? Because I don't think we need to continue the hearing. We just need to.
I don't see Bill on the, on the panel at the moment.
Yeah, what happened to Bill?
He dropped off.
Well, we'll make a motion to adjourn for lack of a quorum.
Yeah.
Lived all eye.
Relax.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks Alice, thanks Chris.
Just to be sure, so the next one should, will be in person or was that settled or not?
In person, yes.
Okay.
What will do?
Mallory, we lost you.
It was also muted, too.
Oh, sorry.
Hi.
Mallory, we lost you again.
Maybe do it in the chat, say something in the chat, Mallory. I don't know if that will work.
Yeah, it wasn't letting me know. I don't know what's going on with my, um.
There you go.
Alright, cool. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, um, the meeting will be a hybrid option where you can either zoom in or you can attend in person. But the attendance will only be for members of the board and anyone with an item on the agenda. Everyone else will be Zoom.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so there, if, so for example, just so I'm clear, for example, if Wesley can't make it, he lives in Sherburne, Mass. He'll be able to zoom in if I'm there?
You got it.
Okay. Great.
Super.
And this will probably take place in the, um, building under the library where I work, because I'm sure there's a select board meeting that night.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Good night, thanks Bowie, thanks Wes.
Bye, thank you.
See you later.
Do we, um, Mallory, do we have any other business tonight?
I don't think so. The only thing I had to update was the COVID meetings. So as of the fifteenth, unable to meet imp, um, over Zoom as of right now. So any meetings going forward will be in person. Subject to change because there's legislation trying to be pushed through, but I'm happy to be back in person.
Yes. It will be easier.
I hope so.
All right, everyone, thank you very much for your patience and your work on this. This is a complicated one.